All right, and I'd like to call this regularly and duly posted meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to order. And you all will pray with me. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for this day and for this opportunity to gather, to work for the citizens of Harlingen. We ask you that you give us guidance and wisdom, if you give us the ability to work together to solve problems and to make our city a better place to live for all of our citizens. We ask that you watch over those who are in any kind of trouble, sickness, need, or sorrow. We ask for your blessings on our troops serving our country overseas and for veterans who have returned after their long service. Let us do things that are pleasing in your sight. In your name we pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our clear allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the public announcement of events.
We can't hear you.
Public announcement of events. We have them up on the screen there. I don't know whether Paul wants to talk about them.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As usual, we have a whole bunch of events coming up that the city either puts on its own or sponsors. This weekend, along with Valley Praise, the city will host the Easter Egg Drop, and that is at our softball complex on Wilson Road. That's the sports complex on Wilson Road. Those of you that were there last year will remember, it was hot. The forecast is going to be even hotter this year. I think it's supposed to be 97 on Saturday afternoon. We had 8,000 in attendance at this event last year, and so we're planning for a little bit more this year. Basically, this is, we're using all four fields for an egg hunt. So that's it. Saturday, April 13th, The Legend of Rock, that's a private concert at Long Sea Health Fair Park, put on by Joe Garza. Saturday, May the 4th, will be our second annual Cinco de Mayo celebration. That is coming together. We met again about it this week. The advertising for it should be in place by your next meeting, and so the Convention Business Bureau will be able to tell you a lot more about that at that time. But it's coming together very nicely with the help of the Mexican Council's office. We have our Blues in the Hill summer season coming up in May. And then with regards to Blues in the Hill, I think last week you were informed of some news that we got with regards to Blues in the Hill, is that you'll remember last year's November concert was in, coincided with the Dallas Cowboys Festival. We had about 11,000 to 12,000 folks in attendance. Cowboys only come to the Valley once a year, this part of the state, and so it's very competitive. And thanks to Pena Institute, again, we have found out this past week, they will be again here for our November Blues in the Hill concert. Since we took over, since the city took over Blues in the Hill last year, this is a monumental step in expanding this event and turning it into an even bigger event. So effectively, what I'm trying to get across everybody is, the business community here in Harlingen has stepped up big time, because this is effectively a six-figure contribution to the Blues in the Hill series. So that's great. And that will be the show. And then again, Thursday, Friday, July 4th and 5th, you'll remember last year, July the 4th, we had a festival. We're expanding it to two days this year. We're working on a country music headliner still for the Thursday night show. Friday night, the headliner is signed as Little Joe, and there'll be fireworks both nights, and as that gets closer, we'll talk more and more about this. By the way, this is a shortened list, so I don't have to sit up here and talk for the next 10 minutes. But this list is long, and it will continue. Thanks.
On that 4 and 5, did you got the events ready?
Could you repeat that, sir?
And the 4 and 5, independent day, did you got the people that are going to perform with them?
We have the headliner signed for the Friday night part, for the fit, that's Little Joe. And we're still working to find a country music headliner for the Thursday night show, the 4th. But there will be fireworks both nights as well. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Now we're going to go to item A, which is a presentation by Omar Ay Rodriguez, manager of communication and advocacy, Food Bank of the Rio Grande Valley on the Fight Hunger program. And Terry Drefke is here also.
And Terry Drefke, I'm here also. I'm the CEO of the Food Bank of Rio Grande Valley.
Welcome. Glad to have you all here. Thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate the opportunity, Mayor Boswell and City Commissioners, to allow a few minutes of your time. I know you're very busy, so we won't take too much of your time. We have a PowerPoint that we'll go through and talk through. We always enjoy pictures and graphics and stuff like that. The Food Bank's been around a very long time and serving Harlingen a very long time, and we're just beginning to come out and visit with the cities and try to communicate with you a little bit more and educate you as to how much service is that we do bring to your community. We have developed and renovated a very large facility in FAR and moved in there about a year ago. If you haven't come to visit us, we would love for you to come visit. We renovated the Valley Fruit and Vegetable Building. It is a historical building. It's on the National Historic Register. If you're ever in FAR and you want to just drop in and visit, we'd love to have you. It's on CAGE, just about two blocks south of the 281-83 interchange. So our door is always open. Please stop in and visit sometime. We're the fifth largest food bank in Texas and the 29th largest in the United States out of 200. So we're a huge food bank here in the Valley, serving the Valley. And besides, it's a pretty cool building that we restored. And I know you've got some neat buildings here in Harlingen also. At our peak, we've distributed 31 million pounds of food in Hidalgo County and Willacy Counties. You know the poverty level here in the Valley is fairly high. One in four is food insecure, and in children, that's one in two. And we're all concerned about making sure that children are fed. This is our building that I mentioned that has been renovated. We did keep all the neat old Art Deco signs, and they've been renovated. It's a neat old lamella roof, and we're very pleased with the building. I'd love for you to come out and visit sometime. This is some of the families here in Harlingen that we serve, Neighborhood Food Pantry. And in fact, you have Red Cross here that's getting an award in a few minutes. We actually have just under a trailer load of their MREs, meals ready to eat, that are stored in our building. We work closely in the time of disaster, and we are the designated donation manager of disaster commodities for Cameron County and Hidalgo Counties. We do serve over 200 agencies in the three counties. And in Harlingen area, we have nine partner agencies that we service. And as you can see, on a monthly basis, they're serving almost 6,000 clients that are looking for food assistance here in the Harlingen area. And these are listing of the food pantries and feeding programs that are partners of the food bank, that we actually deliver food to either weekly, every two weeks, or once a month, depending on what their needs are and what their ability to store food is and how many families that they're serving. And again, another mom and child that has received some food. And every Friday, we actually bring produce out to church over here on the expressway. It's...
Abundant Life.
Abundant Life. No. Faith.
Faith.
Jesus God, thank you. I always get that one mixed up with the one that's next door to it. And we distribute a lot of produce to our agencies, because they order so much food from us. And we have a fleet of 12 trucks, but our trucks are so full of their regular order during the week that we don't have room to bring them extra produce. So on Fridays, we bring extra produce, and then they come and pick up the produce from us at that church parking lot, which we're very grateful to the church for allowing us to do this. And as you can see, the number of people that, according to the census, is in poverty here in the Harlingen area. And this is how much food was distributed to the Harlingen area in our last fiscal year, which ended in June. And PPIP is what we, our national organization, Feeding America, considers pounds per person in poverty. How much ideally they would like for us to serve is 38 pounds per person in poverty. And I'm actually pleased that our agencies here in Harlingen are actually distributing 27 pounds per person in poverty. And that's actually higher than most of our partner agencies are doing in the rest of the Valley, so I'm thrilled with that. But we are challenging them to get to try to distribute more and get closer to that 38 pounds. But as they see more and more clients, the tendency is to distribute less by serving more. So it is a challenge that we are facing as more people are looking for assistance, as companies are cutting back hours, and people are challenged to try to feed their families. And so the challenge is 11 pounds that we're trying to reach, and again, another family that has been served here in the Harlingen area. And so our challenge is to reach out to diversify our funding sources, and we're coming to you as you look to next year's budget to see if there's any potential for you to support the food bank in some way, knowing how much that we serve your community. And I'm going to turn it over to Omar now to talk to you a little bit more.
Thank you. My name's Omar Ay Rodriguez. I'm the manager of communications and advocacy for the Food Bank. And a part of my job is to speak for those who can't speak for themselves. So I do on occasion go to Austin and I go to DC to shore up support for safety net programs like WIC, like SNAP, and other programs out there that help people get food access. And the thing is, with all the debates right now about the budgeting, SNAP and other food programs have a big target. So in order to mitigate those possible cuts that could be facing the 200 food banks all across the country and for people who need food, we're trying to diversify our revenue, trying to figure out ways to make sure that we can meet the need now and in the future in case there's a hurricane and things of that nature, just to make sure that we're able to serve the people of Harlingen and the Valley. So with that, basically, I just wanted to respectfully ask that we be considered as a line item of next year's budget from the city of Harlingen. And we're very do appreciate your time. If you have any questions, we're there for you as well to answer any questions or concerns you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation and all the information. Thank you for the great work that you do throughout our community and throughout the Rio Grande Valley and the important service you provide to so many citizens who need We'll have to put you in contact with somebody on our staff to talk about whether that's something we can consider in budget time, if it's even possible, but we'll certainly have somebody talk to, somebody on staff will contact you. Okay? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've given you some information there about a lot of programs and stuff like that.
Including a couple of letter support from State Representative Longoria.
We have them. We spotted them right off.
Okay.
And so those are good allies to have.
Yes, they are. They're very supportive.
Eddie and Oscar. Yes, sir. Okay.
Thank you. Y'all have great day.
All right. Item two is a proclamation claiming the month of March is Red Cross Month. We have representatives from the Red Cross here with us today. Y'all would like to come up? Chris Delagarza, Sister Ramona Veer, Lucy Cabanas, maybe not all over here, but those.
I'm here.
We're glad to have you here. And so the proclamation is, whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our heroes, those who volunteer, take life-saving courses or provide financial donations to support an organization whose mission is to help those in need. And whereas we would like to remember those who helped all of us here in Harlingen by giving their time to help their neighbor and thank our heroes, our volunteers, class takers, financial supporters, and help assist those in need. And whereas in the city of Harlingen, the American Red Cross works tirelessly through its employees and hundreds of volunteers to help when disaster strikes, the comfort of the helping hand. It provides 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and provides CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. Whereas across the country, the American Red Cross responds to nearly 70,000 disasters a year. It provides 400,000 services to military members, veterans, and civilians, collects and distributes about 40% of the nation's blood supply, and trains more than 7 million people to first aid water safety and other life-saving skills every year. And whereas our community depends upon American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission, despite these challenging economic times, the American Red Cross continues to help, offer help, and comfort those in need. Now therefore, our responsible mayor of the city of Harlingen, virtually the authority vested in need by the constitutional laws of Harlingen and Texas, to hereby proclaim March 2013 as American Red Cross Month and encourage all Americans in Harlingenites to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. So we want to congratulate all those who work tirelessly for the Red Cross. It's been a wonderful partner organization in our community for all my life and before it has been before. In fact, many, many years, and we've done so many good things during Hurricane Valley and other disasters, we've depended upon the Red Cross to help our community get through those disasters. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks again. Yes, you, sir.
Because March is Red Cross Month, we are having an opening house tomorrow from 2016. And offices are by the front door, right next to the boys and girls, Boys Gap, so that's America. Our building is happening here, so we invite the mayor and the city commissioners and everyone to come and visit with us and look at our facility and talk to the staff and talk to the volunteers, and we can show you what all that we do. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Item three is approval of the minutes of a regular meeting in February 6, 2013, and a regular meeting in February 20, 2013. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There aren't, I'm going to motion approve.
Mayor, make motion. We approve the minutes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Exposed like sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda items 4A and 4B. Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Exposed, motion carries. Item five, public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading for request to rezonate from not designated N District to general retail GR district for 4.20 acres out of 6.20 acres of lots, C block 190, and 1.824 acres out of 6.2 acres of block 190, track 3 San Benito Land and Water Company, located at 29115 South Ed Carey Drive.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to rezonate the subject property from not designated zoning district to general retail district till now for 1,600 square foot of office building for existing farm equipment business. This is a subject property here. It's on the east side of Ed Carey Drive, north of Nixon Road. It's an area view of the property. You can see it's south of the Greyhound Race Park. This is the existing property we've space, so farm equipment and it's posted in office building generally towards the front of the property, the side end of the property of the proposed building. See that the request is consistent with the future land use plan, which shows this area's general retail density. It's also consistent with the general retail zoning pattern to the north of the property. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There was no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff is recommending approval, and P&amp;Z Commission also recommends approval. Take any questions, and applicant's also pressing for questions.
All right. Good item A. It's a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this rezoning? Okay. If you want to speak, come up to the podium, identify yourself, and give us your name and your residence address.
Gail Moore, 709 Town Lane Drive. My only concern is, I'd like to see the picture again where it shows, yeah, the racetrack? The dog racetrack?
If you could address the chair, please.
Oh, sorry. I just would like to see that, how close it is to that. That's all. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing now, I'll propose a public hearing. Go to item B, consider take action to approve adopted ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned rezoning request. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Harlingen, rezoning 4.20 acres out of 6.2 acres of lot C, block 190, and 1.824 acres out of 6.20 acres of block 190, track 3, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision, located at 29115 South Ed Carey Drive, from not designated N district to general retail GR district, providing for publication and updating other matters relating to the foregoing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Exposed like sign. Motion carries. Item six, it's a public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezonate from not designated N district to residential mobile home MH district for lot 254, Palm Vista Estates, Unit 5, located at 15824 Date Drive. Applicant Roberto Rodriguez, chief.
The applicant is requesting to rezonate the subject property from not designated district to local home district to allow for a carport on this existing property. This is a subject property here, just slightly north of Washington Palm Drive. As you can see, most of the area is generally developed with rental homes, uses, and there are several single-family houses on the subject property. The request is consistent with the future land use plan, which shows this area as a high-density residential. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There was no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff is recommending approval, and P&amp;Z also recommends approval. Take any questions on the item. The applicant is also proposing for questions.
Did I hear correctly? This is for a carport?
It's for a carport.
Correct. And are there other carports there? This is the first one?
There are others there. They were grandfathered. They were, this property was in the county previously, and we got annexed to the city back in '08. So there are carports, you know, probably exist when it was in the county.
Okay, so additional people in this area, should they want a carport, then each individual will have to come before the city?
Correct.
Okay. Good. Item A, it's a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Hearing now, I'll propose a public hearing. Go to item B, consider take action to approve adopted ordinance on first reading for the above mentioned rezoning request. I'll ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Harlingen, rezoning from not designated N district to mobile home MH district for lot 254, Palm Vista Estates, Unit 5, located at 15824 Date Drive, providing for publications and updating other matters related to the foregoing.
Second.
Mayor, I have just a couple of questions for staff before we vote. You indicated we're rezoning this area, right?
That's correct.
But the carport, should that be a matter for the zoning board of adjustments?
No, it would be more for...
Because isn't it a variance to the...
It's not a variance, because he's complying with the setbacks. If the property's not zoned, and to get a building permit, the property has to be zoned for that particular use on the property, whether it's residential or mobile home.
I'm just having trouble understanding why if it's, if we're zoning it a certain way, I mean, other than applying for a permit, why would you need to come and get a city commissioner's approval for a carport?
Because per the ordinance, when you want to build a structure, the property has to be zoned for that use, and under the current usage, just though not designated, which doesn't allow very many uses on a not designated zoning district.
Well, the area that we're rezoning is not just that person's property, right? We're not spot zoning here, right?
It is that person's property, but the request is...
I know it's included in that zoning, but, I mean, are we spot zoning here?
Not spot zoning, because it is...
Are we capturing that whole trailer, mobile home park?
The request is consistent with the future land use plan, that shows this area's high-density residential. And staff did do a land use study on this property about a little over a year ago, but we were directed to put that on hold to rezonate.
This is in the contested annexation area?
That's correct.
And therefore, we're not doing zoning, mass zoning?
Right, correct.
So we're going to do this on a spot, catch by case?
Individual basis, right.
Catch by case. Okay. That's all happening.
That was going to be my same question. Is there a reason we're not rezoning the whole area from non-designated to, since it already is a mobile home and slash residential?
Like I said, we were going to rezonate. We did do a land use study for that area, for the other areas that were annexed, but we put that on hold as a result of the property being under litigation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Exposed like sign. Motion carries. Item seven, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading on amendment to the city of Harlingen manufactured home ordinance, section 19.47, to allow an accessory structure on a recreational vehicle lot. Applicant Gary Ball.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting an amendment to the mobile home ordinance to allow accessory structure on a recreational vehicle lot. Under the current ordinance, an accessory structure is permitted in a residential district as long as there is a main use or main structure on the property. In this case, the main structure is an RV, which is only there three months out of the year. So the applicant requested amendment that would allow an accessory structure where an RV would only be there for at least three months out of the year. Staff did grasp the language and the ordinance to incorporate that for strictly for RV lots. If the RV is there for at least three years, that would be considered a primary use. This particular structure is actually currently vacant. This mobile home is renewed, so the applicant is proposing to raise RV and place that accessory structure towards the rear of the property. The accessory structure in this case would be more like what he describes as a Texas room for like hobby room. And the hobby room has been approved by the Architecture Committee for this particular site. Staff is recommending approval. P&amp;Z recommends approval. Subject to the ordinance. Take any questions.
Yes. There's no address on this. Where is this property?
This property is in Mobile Home Park. It's on 15824 Date Drive.
What on the other guy?
It's on Chippewa Circle. I don't have the exact address, but it's in Mobile Home Park, which is...
Basically, what we're doing here is we're amending the ordinance so that it's not particularly, it's going to benefit this applicant.
Correct.
But he does, he is not doing this specifically for his property. This will have a general coverage.
Right.
Because we're amending the ordinance.
Right. For any person that's coming in that wants to put an accessory structure...
That's it.
Right, correct.
And the accessory structure, this is...
It's a, in this particular case...
This is concrete, two-by-four building, brick, stucco...
It's going to be a 12-by-20 building on a foundation.
No, it's got 120 square feet, so we can't go 12 by 20.
Correct. Unless he applies for a specific use permit, which we would have to advertise it, you know, in the newspaper. If it's less than that, it would be, it would just require a building permit.
Yeah, but right now, you're asking us to approve a 120-square-foot accessory building.
We're just asking to approve a amendment.
Actually, we're just amending the ordinance. We're not dealing with a specific property.
No, but I mean, the ordinance calls for a 120.
He'll have to, the property owner will have to deal with the ordinance on that aspect later.
Okay. I am correct, right? It would be, we're going to allow it, but it'd have to be within the 120 unless there's a...
Specific use permit.
Specific use permit?
Correct.
Okay. Because I was there during all of that, and I was trying to figure out how we can do a Texas room in 120 square feet.
This particular item is just amending the ordinance.
Okay.
Did you get your answer? Chris was answered by the staff.
Well, he answered me that we're going to stay at 120. Anything beyond that would require...
Specific...
But we're allowing them to go ahead and put a small, like a lawnmower building or that type of building on a non-occupied lot, from what I remember.
It would be occupied with an RV for at least three months.
Correct.
And in this particular case, the Architecture Committee for this development has approved that structure, but...
I remember that part also.
Okay. Let me go ahead and open the public hearing. Item A, is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Hearing now, one option, public hearing. Go to item B and ask the attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the city of Harlingen manufactured home ordinance to allow an accessory structure on a recreational vehicle lot, providing for publication... providing for publication and updating other matters related to the foregoing.
So moved.
Your second.
Tino.
Any discussion, any discussion? All who's in favor say aye. No opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item A, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow adult business, an electronic cigarette store, and a general retail GR district located at 1106 South 77 Sunshine Strip, bearing a legal description of lot 1, block 1, Gallagher subdivision. Applicant James Boss.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow an electronic cigarette store out of a little over 900-square-foot suite out of what's known as the Creeksite Plaza Shopping Center. It's located on South 77 Sunshine Strip. This is the existing structure. This HEB would be towards the south of this structure, these is suite here. This request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments. Staff did not receive any objections to the proposed request. The affected property owners were notified within the 200 radius. Staff did not receive any objections to the request. Staff is recommending approval. P&amp;Z recommends approval, subject to the applicant maintaining required parking, maintaining required permits, and complying with requirements from the planning, health, fire, building, and police departments. Take any questions? And the applicant is also pressing for questions.
So this is a one-product store?
It's a one-product store, where it may be serving electronic cigarettes and accessories. The applicant described as many t-shirts, which would all be, in addition to be sold, aside from the cigarettes.
And will there be regular tobacco sold?
No.
Just electron?
Right.
Nicotine liquids.
Also for clarification, I think I read it up on the, some of the backup documentation. It's strictly going to be accessories for that electronic cigarette devices.
Correct.
There's no, I think it was pretty clearly stipulated as far as the prohibition of the synthetic drugs.
Correct.
Any of those.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, let's go to item A. It was a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against a specific use permit? Hearing now on closed public hearing, go to item B. Consider take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the above-mentioned specific use permit. We can ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 07-27 of the City of Carlington, to issue a specific use permit to James Bossy to allow an adult business, an electronic cigarette store in a general retail GR district located at 1106 South 77 Sunshine Strip, bearing a legal description of lot 1, block 1, Gallagher subdivision, subject to one, providing and maintaining the required off-street parking spaces, two, maintaining the proper state and city permits, three, must comply with the Carlington Code of Ordinance, chapter 130.07 unlawful subsistence, and four, comply with requirements administered by the planning, health, fire prevention, and police department, providing for publication and updating other matters related to the foregoing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye. No opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item nine, consider take action to grant a variance to the City of Carlington subdivision ordinance, number 07-28, section 41.1.6 A and B, with reverse, the five-foot sidewalk required on Expressway 77 Frontage Road and T Street on the proposed Crozier Supply subdivision, bearing a legal description of 4.6 acres of land out of lot 1, block 1, gorgeous quick-to-fix food subdivision located on the east side of Expressway 77, north of Teague Road.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a variance to the five-foot sidewalk that's required on the Expressway 77 Frontage Road, which would be this section here, and along T Street for a proposed one-lot subdivision that will be used as a warehouse, distribution center. Again, it's a one-lot subdivision. These are, these are the existing, which you see highlighted in yellow, the existing sidewalks along the Frontage Road. There is generally no sidewalks, with exception of the sidewalk, which is further south of Teague Road, which is where Motel 6 is. Most of this area is pretty much developed with industrial use. This is T Street. These are, this yellow line show the existing sidewalk, which, there's one on the east side of T Street, south of Jefferson Street. There's one existing close to the adjacent subdivision. There's one over here, north of Lozano Street, and of course, this is the proposed ninth-grade academy school. This is the existing sidewalk adjacent to the subdivision. This is the proposed subdivision, so there will be a future connection in the sidewalk here. Staff is recommending approval for the variance for the sidewalk that would be located on the, on the Frontage Road, being that most of that area is developed. However, disapproval for the sidewalk that's located on T Street, being as a result of the residential area and the school that's located about 800 feet from this property, there's obviously a future connection with the sidewalk here. A four-vote vote is required to overturn the decision of the P&amp;Z Commission, which recommended approval for the variance for the sidewalk on the Frontage Road, but disapproval for the sidewalk on T Street. Since the P&amp;Z Commission, the developer has constructed the sidewalk on T Street, so the general, the variance would be...
That's a non-issue.
That's a non-issue. The variance is strictly for the one on the Frontage Road, which staff and P&amp;Z Commission recommended approval on. I'll take any questions. I'm going to...
I took my question away. They built the sidewalk.
They built the sidewalk.
When I went over to the sidewalk, it was...
And it's five-foot?
It's five-foot. It's been approved by the engineering department.
T, T Street.
Okay, any, any other questions? And do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the variance.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
All who's in favor say aye. No opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item ten. Consider take action to approve the preliminary ranking of the planning consulting firms for the professional consulting planning services for a new comprehensive plan, and authorize staff to negotiate a contract with the highest-ranking firm.
Ken, Mayor, Commissioners, the comprehensive plan, as you know, we sent out a request for qualifications, and we got back responses from the four very well-qualified consulting firms that had experience in preparing comprehensive plans. The city manager and the city commissioners appointed a comprehensive plan advisory committee to hear presentations from all four of these consultants. The committee's made up of Mr. Jesse Robles, Mr. Trey Peacock, Mrs. Connie Salas, Mr. Jerry Purpishaw, Ms. Lupita Gutierrez-Garza, and Mr. Kevin Campbell. And they all came down one day, made their presentations, and the committee did their evaluations independently and turned those in. Those were tabulated by the engineering and the planning department. And attached in your packet was an Excel sheet that listed all the consultants with the, with the different rankings. At this time, the top-ranked firm, which was Half &amp; Associates, were recommending that the city commission would authorize staff to enter into negotiations with him to prepare the, the plan. If we're successful with him, then we would come back with a contract. If not, we would ask that you authorize us to move on to the number-two-ranked consultant. The representatives from Half &amp; Associates are in the audience tonight, if you have any questions of them, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time as well.
For the benefit of the audience here, what were some of the criteria and ranking these for?
Uh, it's a, it's a set criteria that was developed by, by the Public Works and Engineering Department for whenever we have proposals or contracts, et cetera, that come into the city. The, the main criteria is the experience of the people on the staff that would actually take on the project, the project manager, and the support staff, and people that would be preparing all the, the documentation, data, and information to prepare the comprehensive plan, experience that they've had with preparing other comprehensive plans for other municipalities or cities similar to the City of Carlington, and then familiarity with the rules and regulations, state laws, et cetera, that pertain to the preparation of comprehensive plans. And so there was a set number of points that were assigned to those, and we had a, a meeting before we had the presentations with the committee to explain the process, and we put the, the forms up on a PowerPoint and went over it and answered questions that they had, so that they knew how to prepare that and how to be objective whenever they did it. So that was the process.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, is there a motion to accept the staff's recommendation?
So we bear...
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
I do have one question. What's the timeframe for this?
Uh, the timeframe is that what we're planning to do is, the consultant would like to schedule a meeting to come down soon to, to meet with a variety of the different staff members in different departments to, to talk about what our expectations are. We, we outlined a, a pretty good scope in the RFQ, but they, they want to make it clear what it is that we're expecting for them to produce. So we would hope we could do that in the, in the next couple of weeks, and then, once we've done, done that, we would actually start conducting some negotiations to try to agree and see if we can move forward with a, a contract at which time...
Are you talking the timeline for the negotiation, the timeline for the completion of the...
Well, I mean, you know, you can fast-forward, but I mean, what are we looking for?
For the end product?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, once we get the contract in place, usually it takes anywhere from about nine to 12 months to get through the, the process to, to get a, a plan adopted.
About this time next year, we'll have some...
I, I would certainly hope so.
That's the intent, and that's part of the negotiation process.
Right.
Mayor, this is an important project for the, for the City of Carlington. It's something that really needs to be done to help guide our future and determine how we'll continue to grow, especially with the kind of growth that we've, that we've been experiencing. So I want to congratulate and thank the members of the advisory board who spent the time to look at the proposals and to evaluate them. I know a couple of them are in the audience, Mrs. Salas and former Commissioner Jesse Robles, Chairman of our 4B Corporation, that helped fund the, the study, is funding the study. So we thank you and all the rest of the members of the, of the advisory panel for your hard work. Do you want to say something?
No, that's what I wanted to say.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. That's it. That's, that's, that's good. Very good. Item 12, I'm sorry, 11. Consider take action to approve the 2000...
Mayor, I think...
That is the indication that we haven't voted?
I have a first and a second.
I hope we had a vote. All who's in favor say aye. No opposed, like sign. Then I thought, then I thought the official overtook the question. Anyway, we got it done. Item 11, consider take action to approve the 2011 grant adjustment notice from the Gallagher Division of Emergency Management, the St. Anne Homeland Security Grant Program. Chief?
Mayor Commissioners and Manager, what this is, this is sub-recipient agreement adjustment notice. In 2011, we were awarded a little over $17,000. It was 17,723.85, and that was for hazmat equipment, confinement space, trench rescue, high angle. Out of that, we spent everything but 56 cents, so we have to do the sub-recipient agreement to close out the grant year and de-obligate 56 cents so we can go back to the Department of Homeland Security. Staff is recommending approval.
I'll make the motion that we approve the staff recommendation.
Spend the 56 cents. It cost us more than 56 cents to put this item on the agenda. Okay, we got a motion. The second. All who's in favor say aye. No opposed, like sign. Well, consider take action to approve the renewal of the 2013 season of a contract in the City of Carlington and Carlington National Bronco Baseball League, the use of ball fields at Tom Wilson East Sports Park and the sports complex on Wilson Road, applicant City of Carlington. I'll share it on this call.
Ken, good evening, Mayor's and Commissioners. In avoid, in, in order to avoid being a little bit repetitive, I will tell you that the next six items on the agenda are all renewals of existing youth league contracts between nonprofit youth leagues and buried, and, and the city for the use of various sites the taxpayers own.
So that you can identify, and I don't have to ask the question repetitively like you indicated. Seems to be some issues going on with some of the, the leagues, the nonprofit leagues.
Okay.
And some struggles maintaining integrity within the, the rectors and, and, and I've heard some investment stories going on. People taking advantage of some of the, some of the nonprofit leagues around town. Hopefully, only a few instances, but we need to make sure that each one of these that we grant, that the 501(c)(3) is update, up to date, and that we are truly leaning on these, these boards that we're agreeing to allow to use these taxpayer-funded facilities, that they're there for the benefit of the kids and not to be making money off of these for, you know, themselves. And I just want you to point out that as we go through here, that we make sure that we have a full commitment and a due diligence effort on behalf of each one of these leagues, if they don't already have the certificate with us, that they get it, and we have a plan of action to get these in. And I'm going to recommend in the future, I don't want to be specific about the incident that I'm, I'm aware of, but we need to institute some stricter oversight of these boards that, that control these leagues, these nonprofit sports leagues, because, you know, there, there's some of them that have just fleeced the parents that, that think they're coming into an event, they're going to have their children in there, they're going to teach them sportsmanship, athleticism, and it turns out that that's not what, that's not what happens. So I want, I just want to make that, that statement before we get started through these, approving these lease facility lease agreements, because we need, we need to do more due diligence from the city's perspective to make sure that we're dealing with upright organizations and that those folks are aware that we're going to be taking, holding them accountable to make sure that they're not taking advantage of our citizens and the community.
Yes, sir. Direction is, is certainly clear. I know that there are, at least half of the, half of the boards that you're mentioning are represented here tonight, and so they're listening to that also. In addition to the nonprofit things that we, that are in the contract that we get from them each year, we also request their financials. In fact, for this group that's coming up tonight, this will be the first year that the contract require them to submit to us an audited financial report.
Okay, and the audited aspect of it, is that something that we're asking?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
For anybody that gets a facility use agreement?
Yes, by direction of the, yes, by the direction of the commission last time we discussed this. Yes, sir.
Because I know that some things have gone on this, this last year that's recent and fresh, and I'm sure you're aware of some of it, but we need to make sure.
When can we expect those audited reports? I mean, because we're doing this now.
Right.
Should we be getting their previous years? Or be for next year?
Yeah, it would be before next year.
Before next year, yeah. Yes.
And if we don't, if they're not approved, you know, for the 501(c)(3)'s, then we need to make sure that, that we're holding them accountable to get that as well.
Absolutely.
To put them on a, put these organizations on some kind of a...
I recommend that they not approve any of them today, because we need to check all this.
Well, we need to go through, there's some in here, I think, that, that...
Because we need to understand that those parts belong to the community, not the one person. They want to manipulate all that part, so I think that we better even check it out.
Absolutely.
Mayor, I would just ask that we go ahead and let them and maybe work on it as a case-by-case basis?
I believe some of these already have their 501, 503...
They may be in good standing, and I don't want to...
Right, right. I'm agreeing with...
I don't want to penalize everybody, because there may be some...
Correct.
So let's go through and look at them case by case.
Actually, I have one question. So the forms you're requiring are an audited financial report of the organization, correct? Or are you, are you requiring the IRS Form 990?
Some of them give us a 9...
I think it's 990.
The, the contracts, the proposed contracts that you have in front of you tonight, for the first time, if they're approved, will require an audited financial report.
Okay.
The current language under which they have operated up until tonight simply requires a copy of their financials, and there are various ways that they present that to us. Most of the time, yes, it's the IRS form for nonprofits. Some of the times, it's, it's, it's a one-cheat statement of their, you know, their end balance, so very specific.
Are you asking for audited financials in addition to the 990? Or you don't care about... Or you don't care about the IRS form?
Our primary concern is the audited financial report, yes. The, the proposed contract does not mention the nine ninety form that you were referring to.
Should it?
That would be up for the commission's decision. Wouldn't they be one of the same?
No.
Well, I think we can take that up at a later time, but let's go ahead and move forward and see.
And then the, the second thing, so, um, you've mentioned that there may be embezzlement. Has anybody reported any of this to the police?
I think that the investigation is ongoing and they intend to. But like I said, I don't want to penalize every league for some bad apples. So we need to move forward and look at these, and, and that, that will occur in its own time.
For these items tonight, you, uh, the applicants right now that are looking for the, the contracts, you've already, all of the stuff that we've talked about now, with the exception of the audit report, that will be a condition for this contract.
Correct.
At the end of the contract year, that's already been verified as far as their, their nonprofit status and everything else.
The one nine ninety, that, that's the tax return for, for the non-profit.
Correct.
Profit. You want to add that as a, so far you've got, um, in, in here you have insurance, the audit financial statement, the, uh, uh, certificate of incorporation.
You know.
What you really, what you really need is a good, what you really need is a good stand, you need a, uh, you know, you need to have, uh, proof of being in good standing.
You know, it, I mean, anybody can come up with a sheet auditor and they're not saying this is income debit expenses, but, uh, totally.
Well, just to make sure that they're complying with both, both state law.
But to do something, um, you know, you gotta be up and up with the IRS.
You want the nine ninety? I would say we probably need both.
Yeah, I would recommend adding the nine ninety.
Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we, uh.
Yeah.
We can add that into the facility.
As we approve the agreement, uh, at, the, the agreements we approved, uh, with, as amended to include furnishing the Form nine, uh, the recent one nine ninety, April of one nine ninety, and also certificate of good standing from the controller's office.
Okay. And going back to Commissioner Castillo, your question, um, with regards to the, the five oh one C status, uh, the six that you have in front of you tonight, all the documentation that they have given us indicates they're all in good standing. And the staff, there is a website that the staff uses. With one exception? Okay. I know the, the city staff, we, we take the information they give us, and there's a website, I don't know off the top of my head, that we verify, uh, whether their nonprofit status is active or not.
It's a Genoa number fifteen, and we can discuss it when we get to Genoa.
Okay, let, let's go ahead and take this first and out. Is there a motion, is there a motion to approve the, uh, National Bronco League contract?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the National Bronco contract with the addition of the nine ninety requirement, IRS nine ninety.
And certificate of good standing.
And a certificate of good standing.
All right, is any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
I did have one, I was trying to get your attention.
Sorry?
When, when they, when we had the meeting yesterday, there was a question about security. Now, they have liability insurance, do we need to have any security out there? Is that a requirement, yes or no? Yeah, Commissioner Lee, I have the discussion. Of course, this was, keep in mind, this was after the Parks and Recreation Board. Parks and Recreation Board yesterday considered all six of these. Uh, they're recommended to you for your approval. Uh, after that approval, the discussion came up about requiring security, um, at league events, like league games and tournaments, not practice during the week, but just during games and tournaments. And so I believe that was. Should that be something provided by the league, or should that be something that the city does or nothing at all? That was the question.
Is there a need, is there a need for?
I think that they don't serve alcohol, and I don't think that PD, uh, probably visits these parks like they do the bars. So I wouldn't want to stipulate that they, they have a security requirement.
It'd be another expect, it'd be another, I mean, the question is, is there a need for?
Is there a need for it?
And, I mean, I, um, but it's some soccer games right now where.
No, it just, it came up, and I said, oh, at least.
But not here. I have not ever experienced personally a concern about needing security at a soccer match. But I don't know, I mean, I, but it seemed like if there's not a need, that would be an additional expense to the kids and their families, that they would have to find, somehow find those funds to provide security, so I would not want.
I did hear from somebody that said we would be putting an additional burden on an authority.
Yeah, right. I, I don't think that what Commissioner Metzger recommended and what Mayor Boswell recommended in terms of the documentation of good standing or the nine ninety, I don't think that has any financial.
It doesn't.
But, so I'm going to, I'm going to stick with that, but I think that's security. I'm, I'm, I frequent the soccer field and the, the softball fields, uh, weekly, and, uh, though they do have arguments, I don't think they rise to the level of needing security.
And I thought I would ask you to, because I know that you go quite a bit with his prior experience. I just wanted to make sure that we're all, we at least vetted it and we talked about.
I'm trying to make the seven thirty game.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'll shut up. I'm ready to vote.
Uh, we, I think we have a motion and a second.
And a second.
Yeah, there's a vote.
And there's a vote.
There's a vote, Mayor, the commission voted on it.
We voted.
Okay.
And that was for the, oh, that was twelve.
First team is, uh, the, consider take action or renew two thousand and thirteen season league contract between the city of Harlingen and the Harlingen American Little League, East Pendleton Park and Long Sea Hill Park. Is there a motion to approve the agreement with the?
I'll make the motion with the same contingencies on, uh, item twelve.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Unless, unless we've got some discussion about that, please, Mayor, you need to know about.
Item fourteen, consider take action to approve the renewal of two thousand and thirteen season of contract between the city of Harlingen and Harlingen Pony Girls Softball League to use the fields at Arroyo Park. Is there a motion to approve the contract with the amendments?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item fifteen, consider take action to approve and renew a contract between the city of Harlingen, Harlingen, Texas Bronco Pony League to use the designated fields at Victor Park with, is there a motion to approve the contract with the amendments?
Question.
I think this was the one that had a, did not have the five oh one C three.
Correct.
I believe, I believe the determination, I believe the terminate, determination letter that the league has from the IRS is, is dated. But the staff did check online to see if they were active, and it did come back that they were active. We will double-check that for you.
Massed in, turn.
There is a letter from a CPA by the name of Roberto Lopez, signed February seventh, two thousand and thirteen, stating that he was assisting the Texas Bronco League in complying to reactivate the five oh one C three status. So I don't know if it has been activated since February the seventh, but it should be noted that there's an admission of non-activation.
And Paul, you said you all checked on this?
We have checked on it, and it did show it is active. I will double-check that for you.
Should we, should we take a listen, or?
Well, it's just subject to.
Subject to. I'll make the motion to approve it contingent upon validation that it is approved and.
Understood.
With the same contingencies as.
I mean, that, that should be, I shouldn't sign any of these contracts until you've got all of the.
Even though we approved them, he should.
That's correct.
Even though they're approved, they don't have to be executed unless.
You're correct.
They're, you know, they comply.
Correct.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and a second. All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, like sign. Item sixteen, consider take action to approve the renewal for the two thousand and thirteen season contract between Harlingen and Arroyo Soccer, allowing to use the Harlingen Soccer Complex. Is there a motion to approve the amendments?
Same amendment.
There's a motion and a second. All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item seventeen, consider take action to approve a request for the renewal of facilities usage agreement between the city of Harlingen and the Texas Youth Football Association, uh, Harlingen Hawks for the use of soccer fields at the sports complex on Wilson Road.
I have a question. Harlingen Hawks, is this, uh, Harlingen High School Hawks?
No, this is, this is youth football. Um, and they sort of align themselves with South. As a matter of fact, they play their games, uh, at South.
Okay, but this is not part of the school district?
It is not.
I think there was some concern about a for-profit league that may be linked. Is this something that I've heard, or?
We have not heard that. There are, representatives of this league are here if you have questions for them.
Sure, let's, let's.
Hi, good afternoon, or good evening. Uh, my name's Isabel Kellogg. I'm the vice president for the Tifa Harlingen Hawks. Uh, Tifa stands for Texas Youth Football Association. Um, we came before you last year to be approved to practice at the, uh, Wilson, um, complex, and we're just coming back for renewal to practice there also. Still.
I, I think you, you're aware, we had some earlier discussions about some concerns that we're, wanted to make sure that all of our facilities are utilized by nonprofits and that, that we don't have any individuals who are.
Yes, sir.
You know, making money.
Right.
Taxpayer infrastructure, because we do pay lights and.
Yes, sir.
And water and, you know, and everything else. Regardless strictly, just, just one league, there's not any association?
We're not associated with anybody. We're just a Texas Youth Football Association. I know there's another, uh, Texas Youth Football Association, which is the Cardinals. We're the Hawks. Uh, I know Cardinals are associated with the city league, so that may be what you're referring to is a city league with the Texas Youth League, which is the Cardinals.
Which is the Cardinals.
And the city league, but we are strictly, uh, the Hawks. And, uh, we practice Monday through Friday, uh, five to eight.
And it's just Harlingen area?
It's just a Harlen, well, we do have kids that come from other cities to play with us.
But primarily, you're just.
Right, right.
Practice and play.
Right, it's just practice. We don't play our games there. Um, for the spring, we play at different city stadiums, but for the fall, we play four games here, which is at the Hawks Mini Stadium, which we have been approved, uh, with the school district, and four away games. And then if we make it to the playoffs, which we did last year, um, then we play, um, at different cities. Um, we did make, four, five of our players did make it to the Alamo Dome, uh, for the playoffs.
That's fantastic. Did the Cardinals get that far?
Uh, no. And we beat them.
Do you feel why, why you hire a, a security or police officer?
No, we weren't asking for, uh, well, when we play in the fall, if we play at the, uh, Hawks Mini Stadium, the, uh, school district does require us to have a police officer, but I think the officer that they're talking about is at the tournament for the baseball. We're strictly asking for practice field. That's all we're asking for.
And all of your play, your games are played at the mini, at the practice field for the?
No, we don't play any of our games at the practice field unless we do scrimmages.
No, no, I'm not talking about the cities, but the school district.
Uh, the school district, we play only for, you're right, we only play at the, uh, Hawks Mini Stadium. Yes, sir.
Okay, um.
Uh, if I could add something?
Did we get a motion and a second on that? I'm sorry.
Oh, um, that, um, we are a nonprofit organization, and, um, our bank statements were turned in. And the only thing that we ended up with for the year, which was last year, uh, we started in June, which we only had six months of last year, um, was what the bank required us to remain in the, to keep the account open. And we turned those bank statements in to show that there was no profit made, and all of our funds were put back into the organization as far as, at the end of the year, which we have pictures, we had an end-of-a-year party for all of the, um, players and parents, trophies, uh, um, medals were given, and, uh, we just had a big party for everybody at the end of the year to, to use all of the funds.
So do you fill it up on nine ninety?
It, I'm sorry?
Do you fill it up on nine ninety?
Yes, we do. We have our, uh, IRS nonprofit, uh, a form that was turned over to the, to the city.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I don't have a motion.
Okay, how about a motion, how about a motion to approve the contract with amendments? And there's a second. Any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're done, done with the, uh, these youth contracts. Uh, item eighteen, consider take action to allow the city manager to enter into an agreement with Cameron County and H two O Partners for the development of the Hazard Mitigation Action Plan update. Yes, sir?
Uh, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, the new hazard mitigation plan shows the purpose of identifying actions that will, uh, expose, uh, hazards to people and property of Cameron County. Hazards can be defined as hurricanes, flooding, tornadoes, wildfires, drought, hailstorms, severe, uh, winter storms, and earthquakes. In, uh, two thousand and eight, the city of Harlingen adopted a hazard mitigation plan, which is set to expire in, uh, September, twenty thirteen. By having the FEMA approved mitigation plan, the city remains eligible for, to receive funds. In, uh, twenty twelve, uh, Texas Department of Public Safety made some funds available for grants with a cost share pro, cost share of seventy-five, twenty-five percent. Uh, the city partnering with Cameron County, the county put out our refuse and selected the firm of H two O Partners to work in the plan. The cost will be forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and our share of the cost is one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Staff recommends approval.
Mayor, I'd like us to approve the staff recommendation.
I'm sorry, just a, a quick comment. The actual attachment on the agenda is the contract with not the latest legal revisions.
All right, I have those here.
Right, so the commission needs to know that what's in their attachment is not the latest draft.
I have the last draft.
The fund draft. There were legal provisions made that do not substantially change the contract, but do further protect the city. So those are not any attachment.
Okay, well, then again, the motion is to approve the contract, as, which will be approved by the city attorney. Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have some questions. So this is going to cost forty-three and change, and we're coming up with?
Twelve hundred and fifty.
Twelve hundred and fifty. Where's the other money coming from?
Cameron County, Spain, and the rest is coming from the grant.
And how long is this contract for, then? Does this one expire sometime this year?
For the next five years.
It's five years.
Yes, the, well, the study will be for the next five years.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item nineteen, consider, uh, possible action to amend ordinance number ten forty regarding mobile food vendors.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners and City Manager. Uh, this amendment will allow mobile food vendors to operate within the city's general meat health zones. Uh, there's two types of mobile food vendors, uh, that's, uh, a coal, coal truck that would allow the sale of prepackaged food items, and hot trucks that would allow the, uh, food preparation within the unit. All mobile units, uh, food units would, will prepare, will report data to a commissary or a base of operation for cleaning, restocking, and disposal of wastewater. In addition, mobile, uh, food vendors will be allowed to operate on city streets during festivals, special events, and city promote, sponsored events, provided the streets have, uh, have been closed and permission granted by the city commission and appropriate permission has been obtained, uh, from the events sponsor. Staff recommends approval.
We, we do have one, uh, one change under, uh, section C. Uh, the last word says guideline. We are actually recommending they should read requirements. And this would be, this is the first reading of this ordinance.
What, what sentence on, in section C?
The, the, the last word, actually, the last end.
Oh, God, that's actually, and you want to read.
I believe there's also another spelling or, or a word.
Under.
Word.
Section D.
Um, it's, it's C. Where did I see it? Maybe this is. Oh, uh, nine, C nine, is residential neighbors, it should be neighborhood. Should it not?
Yes, it's correct.
Neighborhoods.
Neighborhoods?
Yes, sir.
So, so there is an existing ordinance, and this is to amend and tweak?
Right, uh, they're, right now, they're, uh, not, they're not allowed to, to, to sell. There, there, there's no, uh, mobile food vendors allowed, so this would allow them. So this would allow them to sell.
Now, uh, I'm questioning on Ed Carey. Um, I see periodically trucks with mangoes or watermelts. Does that include them? I don't see that this length.
The health department does not regulate whole produce. One, uh, that's, we, we, we don't, um, once they start chopping or dicing or doing fruit cups, then it becomes a retail, then we re, we do regulate them, but whole produce like tomatoes, uh, vegetables, we do not regulate those.
Those they're going to need for Texas, Texas licenses to sell that.
They may need a, a, a vendor's permit from the planning department.
This is different. This is different right now.
Right, this is for food items.
It is, uh, vendors, they're going to be allowed, or Harlingen?
Only in, in a general retail zone.
So the ice cream truck, not going to happen?
It's, it's gotta be stationary. They're, they're, they're not, they're called mobile, but they're not, they, they have to be at a fixed sign.
So the ice cream man can, cannot drive through residential and stop and?
That, that's, that is correct. Yes, sir.
This will, my understanding of the, of the, of the, where this came from is you've got some people who want to do like a food truck, like you see on television or on South Congress in Austin, uh, and other places where they, you know, have these food trucks and, and, and our ordinance because of that ice cream vendor issue, it wouldn't allow that and this changes that. It also goes further back, goes back to the fifties. We have an ordinance that has no selling from streets, sidewalks or alleys. So this is to, to leave that in place, but allow a certain section of the, uh, of the vendor.
Nonprofits have been, uh, they do.
The nonprofits, we've always had that in there and we've always had the four weekends or the four events for nonprofits, but this is to allow for a commercial establishment to increase.
Question on that, three hundred, I think it's a three hundred foot distance from an existing restaurant?
Yes.
What exactly is that distance? Uh, how is that established? Is that from the property line? Is that from the front door?
I would say that it would be from the property line.
You think that might want to be additional language to make that clear, so it's not open to?
That's a great recommendation. Um, Rick Navarro's law firm actually wrote the ordinance in my absence, so you may want to give direction to them.
I, I understand that the T A B C measures the length of a sidewalk crossing the street and length of a sidewalk. So conceivably, if the lo, the block is long enough, you could actually be across the street from, from a restaurant. So I was happy that, uh, Mr. Castillo brought that up, Commissioner Castillo brought that up. I think we need to clarify that so everybody understands how the measurements have been taken.
So I have another question. So there are Raspa stands that are fixed.
Uh-huh.
Uh, today I saw a Raspa stand on Grime and Morgan Boulevard.
Uh-huh.
And it's, it's a trailer on wheels and I don't, I don't ever remember that it moves or what, so they would be covered by this?
Those are sta, uh, stationary, it's, it's like a restaurant.
Even though it has wheels?
Yes, they, they do not move. Those, those are stationery.
Yeah, how did, how did the, the current stationary Raspa stand, when it comes to utilities, are they required to have their own electric meter and water meter?
About three and a half years ago, we amended this ordinance, uh, and, and, uh, from that point forward, uh, they have to hook up to water and wastewater. Before, they had, uh, holding tanks and retention tanks for the, for disposal of the wastewater. So those, we identified eighteen, uh, units and those were ground fouled in, so they, they were perfect.
I see here on this, uh, guideline, it says if the mobile food unit is stationary for more than two hours, that agreement must be from the, they must have a written agreement with the property owner for restroom facilities located within a hundred feet of the mobile unit.
That is correct.
For their employees.
Yes, that's, that's correct. Uh, right, right now, if, if, if there is a, a, one of those mobile that are permanent, uh, the sponsor, uh, they, they have to be open concurrently, same business hours, and they have to have restrooms uh, for the employees and customers within a hundred feet.
So the only requirement for the mobile food unit is for the employees for the restroom access?
Right.
I have a question on the fee schedule. Uh, it says, uh, individual supermarket departments. So HEB Walmart have the sushi, they have the bakery, they also have a deli. Do you inspect those currently?
Yes, uh, when, when we amended the, the work, this ordinance the last time, uh, we, we now charge each department separately. Before, it was, all the departments were, were, was one permit, but they were inspected individually, but now, uh, we charge each department separately and, uh, uh, it's based on a number of employees. So, for example, HEB can have five or six departments within the store, so each one is a separate inspection.
And then with this, this inspection, then is, does this also include the, uh, the meat and seafood counter?
Yes, it does.
And so my HEB could have maybe five or six inspections?
That's correct.
And how often are these inspections?
We, we call it the, uh, the IFA, it's an inspection frequency assessment. It's based on risk factors and they're either, uh, rated low, medium or high, low spec once a year, medium twice a year and high three times a year.
Are there any stickers on doors like there were in Pittsburgh with the A B C to, uh, to let people know how clean they're not?
Uh, we do not issue those, no, sir.
So how's the consumer to know if it's low, medium or high?
Well, we, we're, we're subject to open records and, and we, we get from the A B C and the CBS affiliate, uh, every Friday, open records request on, uh, on channel four and channel five, they're, they're posted on their, on their website.
And they're subject to being shut down if they're, if they're not compliant or, or they're a health risk to the, to the public?
Now, what he's reading is not been, is, we're not amending that part. That's, that's been, that's existed.
I was just bringing out information.
There is one more change for the record. Uh, C eleven, it says guidelines that need to be changed to re, requirements also.
Okay.
In a special area, they can, uh, uh, put this little trailer or something like, like the Austin they have on one street or something like that.
And here they, they will be allowed in, in general retail zones only.
So Blues on the Hill, are there food vendors there, food break vendors?
Yes.
Would they would be covered under this?
Yes, they, uh, under, uh, item number D, under city sponsored events, they, that, that's where they, they would be allowed.
They would still have to get a permit, but?
Uh, those are temporary food vendors, the, the ones that are, for example, at, at market days, uh, Blues on the Hill, uh, the Christmas parade, those, those are temporary and they, they can only have, well, if it's a city sponsored, there's no term limits.
One, one last small question. On that number ten, uh, of that list of conditions and requirements, that three hundred dollar, uh, permit fee, that's an annual.
That's correct, yes, sir.
I would suggest that, cause on the other, the fee, the fee schedule you have, you specifically stipulated a annual. I want to put that here as well, just to make that uniform.
Okay.
So, so in addition to a three hundred dollar annual fee, uh, if somebody has three employees in their mobile vehicle, then there's an additional sixty dollars?
No, it's only three hundred, three hundred dollars for all, if there are a mobile unit as defined in your, that's it, it's three hundred dollars. The other fee schedule for the, for, for, for the permanent restaurants.
Okay. Okay, now, we'll read the cap, read, read the caption. Yeah, might as well.
We're getting hungry now.
When, when we clarified item ten, it should be per year, per unit, because there may be somebody that has more than one unit.
In the future, we can develop for something like that.
I thought I meant ask that you read the caption.
In ordinance, amending ordinance numbers oh four dash eighty-five, oh four dash nineteen and ten dash forty of the city of Harlingen code of ordinance is title eleven, chapter one eleven, food and food establishments, section one eleven point oh two, by providing rules and procedures for mobile food vendors and ordaining other matters pertaining to the board government.
Let me entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading with the various proposed changes to be incorporated in the second reading.
So we're?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any further discussion or questions? This will be a fun thing for the city, I think, to do this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item twenty, discussion of possible action of entering into a lease purchase agreement for the city of Harlingen's P twenty-five radio migration to provide for an update of existing radio system at the dispatch center from analog to an eight hundred megahertz digital. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, um, as this opened up for discussion, I want to go through a little history on where we're at and what this is all about. Um, as you all know, a few meetings back or six months ago, we approved the new radio system, the digital eight hundred megahertz radio system. We're currently on the eight hundred megahertz analog and we, was approved and that system is up and running. What this portion of it is, this is to, um, update the police department with some portable and mobile radios and this is to replace the dispatch equipment at the comm center for the dispatchers, that dispatches for police and fire and, and the rest of the city, um, to upgrade their equipment to the P twenty-five and the eight hundred megahertz digital system. So if you're looking at your paperwork there, um, you can see what the pricing is and stuff, but I'll break it down. What this will do, this will allow them to, uh, for all of us to migrate to the new system. It'll get us to the P twenty-five compliant and the concerns that I have, there are other agencies that are already moving towards this way and most of the, the state is. Um, but in our community, um, TSTC is already ready to go digital, but they're waiting on Harlingen to be able to go because if, if they switch to digital and Harlingen doesn't, their police department and the city police department won't be able to talk to each other. So they have their equipment and they're ready to go, but Harlingen's kind of behind a little bit. Um, Valley International Airport Police Department is the same thing. We're holding them back a little bit. Uh, the city of San Benito has already switched all their police. The only ones that they have not switched yet is fire, so at this point, Harlingen is not able to talk to San Benito Police Department at this point right now. Um, today at the, uh, Valley Communications Group, the Rio Grande Valley Radio Communication Group, they approved, uh, Santa Rosa and there's a few other facilities that are around us, like Combs, uh, Primera, Palm Valley, they're all just basically waiting for Harlingen also. They have their equipment and they're just waiting for Harlingen. So, um, on this lease agreement, as you can see, the numbers are fairly high. And to do this, you know, the, the big number comes up is how do we come up with the funding for this? And it is an unfunded liability. Um, so to come up with the funding, they have a lease purchase and on the lease purchase, uh, they, they're offering a five-year, a seven-year and a ten-year and staff is basically recommending the ten-year because it makes the, the least impact to the city budget. And there is no penalty for early payment, so it would, you know, puts a less impact there and there is no penalty for the early payment. Um, the rates on the lease are comparable to what a, the current bonds were sold for. Um, the only difference is that a radio system has a ten to fifteen year life expectancy, so we can't use a bond because the bond has fifteen, has to have at least a fifteen year, um, number on that one. Um, the lease purchase, if you, if you want to ask if anybody in the, the valley is doing this, uh, Cameron County just signed a three million dollar lease purchase with Motorola, uh, South Padre Island just did one with Motorola, Port Isabel did one with Motorola and Carrago County just did a eight million dollar one with Motorola. Um, so these are some of the, the ways that people are, are going. Um, the first year payment is deferred, so there'd be no payment for the first year. On the second year, the city manager and myself had some discussions with, uh, Chief Whitten for the police department and because some of this is for their radios that he can use, um, he would be willing to make one of the first payments with seizure funds. So that would fund the first two years, basically, the waived, not waived, but deferred, uh, payment for the first twelve months and then Chief Whitten could make the first payment and then the city would have two years to be able to work this into the budget. Um, Motorola representatives are here tonight and I'll take any questions if anyone may have a question. Please?
What is the annual cost?
The annual cost on the ten-year lease is a hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Per year?
Yes, sir. Starting at?
So we're talking one point seven million?
It's one, one million, four hundred and eighty-three.
I don't think, I, I don't, did y'all get this? It, it, it came, uh, it was part of another email, there are a couple of different emails that came after the agenda was released? Yes, and it's very difficult the way it is. You have to flip back and forth. Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not seeing the, the lease, uh, rate schedule. Would you like, I have it here if you'd like. You have the off, you have the purchase, you have a purchase price of, uh, one point four eight three million if you purchased.
That's correct. The purchase price is one million, four hundred and eighty-three, eight ninety-two. And also in your packet, you'll also see a, a, a sheet of the radio equipment and, and let me talk about what this will do. You'll have a spreadsheet in there. I believe the one that you have is all in color and to your bottom right, or your bottom left, I'm sorry, that's the bank of radios. And what this will do at the comm center, it replaces the consoles, but it also replaces, I'm sorry.
Just hang on a second, cause neither body have, we, we, none of us have, have any paper.
Okay, it's all on here.
There was no packet.
Okay.
It was emailed subsequently. Uh, I'll do that and they don't have that, the email. Not all of them have that email. Do we have co, uh, copies? Can we make copies of that, please?
Uh, yeah.
You're, you're after the, the dispatch center solution? It's listed dispatch center solution. Not in your regular.
Good thing we all say. Well, Chief, Chief, I have some questions. Uh, I guess I have questions of the other chief. How much seizure money do we get? Can we pay this baby off rather quickly with seizure money? And if we don't have enough money, can we seize more?
You know, that's, that's a funny question. I mean, it's certainly been getting more difficult across the nation, so it's not just us. But right now, you know, uh, I think we average about two hundred thousand a year comes in, you know, we submit a budget, but right now we have in there about three hundred and something thousand and we're always seizing more and more. And a lot of our seized cars, we auction off and that money then in turn goes into the pot as well, so.
Okay, so your pot has about three hundred in it and, and more or less, how much are you, are you willing to pony up for these first two years?
Well, the first payment. We're, we're, we're still negotiating there with the chief, but. The first payment for certain is a hundred and seventy-six thousand.
He may get real cracky signal after a second year.
Well, it's for, it's for, it's for good.
Million dollar, uh.
Well, it doesn't.
The other day and.
Right, see?
You never know by the time you get a year down the road.
Right, and we're certainly looking for monies and as they can tell you, those, you know, those sources have also dried up, but nothing says they won't come out in the future and we're certain.
Well, I, I have some questions with respect to, uh, the migration of the P twenty-five. I mean, we've got to be expected to, to meet the digital requirements at some point anyway. I mean, this is not something that we're doing just to go from analog to digital.
No, you're correct, sir. The, the, uh, the hypothetical date, it hasn't been actually written out and, and passed down by, by the feds yet, but it's, uh, two thousand and seventeen.
And this, and not being digital affects our emergency management plan for the city, right? Is that? Because we want to be able to have transparent communications with all the first responders in the community.
The P twenty-five, that's what they, that, that allows you to talk with agency to agency across the country. It allows any, any radio system to be able to talk to any radio system.
And that puts us at a disadvantage if we have a natural disaster in the, in the community.
Correct. And if other responders come in from out of town and, uh, and they want to talk on the system, then we'd be able to add them, but if we, if we're still at analog, we wouldn't be able to do that.
So I, I think there's a public safety enhancement that's.
Part of the reason why we delayed the, the action of trying to move forward with the contract is, is cause the chief were trying to look for, uh, for some, uh, some of the funding from some of the federal agencies in, in terms of grants, but those have pretty much dried up and the, the options are not, that we have are very limited and this is one of the options.
That's another good question. Down the road, is there, there, may there be other opportunities to, to make future payments with maybe some future grant monies or grant opportunities?
We can, we always look for grants. I know, we were looking for grants. We can, we always look for grants, I know, we were looking for grants, Chief Whitten had his staff looking for grants for quite a while for this. You know, in the past, we used to get some fairly large grants, and like the one that we just had to give back to fifty-six cents, that was seventeen thousand dollars. The numbers on the grants are way down.
Way down.
But if things, you know, and with the way the federal budget is, and cutting back, and FEMA sent out the notice the other day that they're even reducing next year's numbers by a big amount, so it's less to go around. But we do keep an eye open, so if something does come available, we certainly apply for it.
We finish some more questions first. The equipment is Motorola, right, obviously? Are we going to end up owning the radios and repeaters, or what are we going to end up owning at the end of it?
After the end of the lease purchase, we own it all.
Right, and Motorola is a pretty good product, so if we have to upgrade, that would be something that we would still, would it still hold some value that we wanted to, you know, move forward or upgradable or trade-in? I mean, is this, is this a benefit to go with Motorola in terms of the equipment quality?
It's a benefit to go with Motorola, because we've always had Motorola, so a lot of our stuff, like some of, some of the radios that we currently have, like I have in the department now, are upgradable. They can be flashed with the new software, and they can be upgraded. Some of them are obsolete, where they can't be, but both departments currently have some that can be flashed up, and included in, in that quote, if you see it on there, it says three hundred flashes, so that that flash is to upgrade current equipment that we do have, so yes, it's on.
And Motorola is, I guess, or is it the industry leader in providing first responder communication equipment?
I believe so, and I believe, I'm sure they'll tell you that.
Because I know that both you and Chief Whitten have done their due diligence to determine, you know, what the best value for the Harlingen taxpayers are, especially in terms of providing communications equipment for the first responders that you guys are in charge of.
Yes, sir. And I tell you, we had a presentation, we even had another company come down, Motorola knows us. We had another company come down and did a presentation, because other communities, not just ours, wanted to do it, and we held a meeting over at South Texas Emergency Care Foundation, and they come in, and, you know, they sell consoles and radio equipment and different things. What was found is that when you start mixing different vendors, that you lose a lot of features. So on these consoles that they're proposing today, if we were to use a different console instead of this, you lose a lot of the features that the dispatch communication officers over there would not be able to utilize.
So this product demonstration that you're talking about, was this occurred before the county and South Padre Island, and some of these other entities signed on to this Motorola program?
Everyone in the three-county area, all the cities, with the exception, I believe, of two, are all Motorola, in the three-county area. Cameron County is completely Motorola, has been probably for the last fifteen years.
Well, why, I mean, the first item, you know, like a concern I have, this is the first I heard of this was Friday, this was placed on the agenda at the last minute, and we're supposed to, and some of us didn't, and because of that, some of us haven't seen any of the documentation on this. We haven't had a chance to review the contract, lease purchase, compare the interest rates on the, on the, on the lease. This is something we have to decide today, are you telling us we have to decide this today, a one point seven million dollar decision, without the commission having reviewed any of the documents or lease information or the payment, not, not fully identifying a funding source, how we're going to pay for this over the next ten years? We've got to make this decision in two and a half days.
No, it doesn't have to be done today. The only reason that was put on the agenda at the last minute, because the city manager asked me to put it on, and that, it was to take advantage of some cost savings. There is a about a four hundred and ten thousand dollar discount that's applied to this at this point. Some of those discounts go away on the twenty-fifth of this month. So when this item does come back, the cost will be higher.
The representatives are here?
Yes, sir.
Would they be willing to let, give us two weeks to be able to study this, since it was just, I mean, I agree with the mayor, I mean, you know, it's only, it's only one point seven, or one point seven when it's all said and done. I mean, it's just two, we're asking for fourteen days, basically.
No, we're gonna, no, we're gonna have, we're gonna have the commissioner's question answered first.
Attorney General James Junior of South Texas Communications, I represent Motorola. And the question was, is fourteen days okay? There were some deadlines, this document has been in place for many, many months, and we were already in a, in the December area of time, there was one of the product specials that went away, and it was a twenty thousand dollar value hit. We tried to bring it back and bring it back in and retain as many of those things we can, and there's some other specials that are in there that actually go away on the thirtieth. We tried to make sure this thing made it to the agenda if it could, so that we could take advantage of those savings, and it's about another forty thousand dollar, thirty, forty thousand dollar responsibility in there. And so we wanted to make sure that we did everything in our power to make sure that this...
Basically, is it a thirty or forty thousand dollar cost saving, or is it a four hundred thousand dollar cost saving?
No, so there's, there's, okay, so the cost savings that will be lost if we go past the time will be in excess of thirty thousand dollars, I believe it's closer to forty.
Not four hundred.
It's not four hundred. There are some, some heavy discounts in there that are related to...
The total discount is four hundred and ten thousand, but the portion that we lose by the, by the twenty-fifth is thirty-seven thousand.
That is correct.
And that's a Motorola discount, not a discount from you?
It is, it's a national...
So you have no control of that?
That's correct.
Is it possible to have a special meeting in a week to review this before Wednesday cutoff date?
Ten days. The national version goes away at the end of the month, all things must be entered, key punched, all those things that have to happen before that.
By what?
Reasonably.
What day are you comfortable with?
If somebody said the twenty-fifth, you're saying the thirty-first, which, you know, there's a...
The end of the month is, the closing day is Friday, obviously, business day, so that's the twenty-ninth. Some word between those two would be great for me, because I'm the one that gets loaded.
Mayor, we're anticipating, or the staff will be asking the commission for a special meeting, and at March the twenty-seventh, if the commission is early, we can place this item on the agenda for the special meeting.
Furthermore, the legal department does have a meeting with Motorola on Friday at ten o'clock to negotiate some of the legal technicalities of the contract. I too was informed about this contract on Friday.
I had just one, one remaining question for Chief Rinaldi. This, the migration process here, and what's being proposed, would that inhibit or in any way prevent you guys from continuing to maybe consider the encryption? Or this has no impact on that?
On the what, sir?
Encryption.
No, the encryption, I believe, is included in PD's programming, so...
But what, I know there's different levels of encryption, right?
Yeah, what level they, I'm not sure they can...
For a while, a while back, we were looking at the possibility, and at that time, I think there were some things that weren't done with some of the, some of the infrastructure we had at, with the consoles and with the whole radio system, that was very costly. So I'm just asking right now, if this type of migration would also set that kind of a, of a, an equipment benchmark, where it would either prohibit or inhibit us from going through that higher level of encryption?
Actually, it actually establishes the ADS encryption level for the dispatch center and all the police department radios. It clearly sets that bar.
That federal level of...
Yes, sir, correct.
This sort of reminds me of when my daughter called me college, college. And said, Daddy, Daddy, I gotta, I gotta sign this lease agreement today, or I'm gonna miss out on this big, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna get the apartment I want, I'm not gonna get this big discount.
You know, you know what this reminds me of.
And I just, you know, just don't like that.
This reminds me of the New Year's Eve city commission meeting where they moved the November elections to Bay. They posted it on a Friday afternoon, and they told us to come in on Monday and vote on it. The agenda didn't even say November, May election move.
Yeah.
It was so ambiguous, we didn't even know what it was saying, but yet, the mayor is complaining about this one. The fact is, is that we got the information on Friday, and we could have all studied it over the weekend, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, had it in front of us. I'm not sure why the mayor's holding this up, but hopefully, we can get through this next week in the special city commission meeting.
Thank you. My recommendation would be that we wait, that we take this up at the special meeting on a week from today.
I'll make that motion, provided that, can we take a poll to find out everybody will be here next Wednesday?
I can be here.
I'll be...
Commissioner Butler?
I can't commit it this time, I'll have to look at my calendar.
Yeah, sure.
This is an important thing, we need it on the radio.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can make it, so we have four. I'll make the motion that we table this for our March the twenty-seventh meeting.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty-one, board appointments.
Yes, for the development corporation of Harlingen, to Gutierrez Garza.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes, I have a reappointment, Pablo Azan to the Veterans Advisory Board.
All right, and I have appointed Sal Carmona to the Veterans Advisory Board.
Awesome.
Is there a motion to approve the board appointment?
Make a motion.
You asked me to remind you about civil service, Mayor?
Oh, yeah, but you reminded me too late. All right, all those favor say, is there a motion to approve board? Second, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item twenty-two, closed executive session pursuant to Chapter 551, so Chapter D, VTC Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with the city attorney, I seek legal advice from Murali Lee S. Priggin, within the City of Harlingen and White Wings Baseball Club, LLC, for the use of the baseball stadium known as Harlingen Field, in Mount Deho by White Wings, to the city as her motion to join the second session.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the commission's gonna go back into the back room and talk about this item with the reporting, and there will be, there may be action after this. Okay, we're out of executive session at seven twenty-five, and we're going to take no action on item twenty-three. Item twenty-four, citizen communication, has anyone signed up?
Yes, Mayor, we have to, and then Buck, Rickley?
Come back. Hi, I'm Buck Bickley, one-two-five Arcadia Drive. Now, Mayor, you missed my last time, I was up asking for an audit, an evaluation, well, I like this comprehensive plan in regards to the EDC. I have, I have done a number of calculations on, the reason I bring up Bass Pro Shop, because it's an example of some really bad judgment being made in decision-making. Using numbers that I have acquired from newspapers, and it was a thirty-two million dollar loan, five point eight-nine percent, if I'm wrong here, stop me. And what comes up with just an interest for the two years in the payment schedule and things, it's a mil eight with some change. That means that the gross sales of Bass Pro Shop has to be fifty-three million dollars per year to cover the three and a half percent. Now, that's eleven point eight percent of total retail sales in Harlingen. The decision-making on this process was terrible, I question it. My purpose here is to try to get an accounting, some historical data, so that this does not happen again. I can, I'll bet anybody lunch that we didn't make those numbers, Bass didn't make those numbers, I'll bet they, now, the break-even point is thirty-four million dollars, that's our sales tax, and that three and a half percent come together to make, to pay it off, the mil eight. They didn't do that. Now, you talk about, let's go to half of the break-even point, okay, that'd be seventeen million dollars. You talk about how sales tax are going to cover this, I'm sorry to tell you, that that's way out of line. To cover, if you make, if it got to seventeen million dollars, to make back that money, the shortcoming of this, you've got to have forty-seven million dollars more sales tax, excuse me, gross sales, to equal what it is to cover the shortcoming. Okay, so with all those numbers, and you guys know this, I'm sure you've been... May I have your time?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Funny how that works. You talk about comprehensive plans. In business, and this is nothing you guys don't know, you do a, you do managerial accounting, and you go through and you find out, you pick out the problem areas, then you do a forensic accounting to find out why this happened, and you try to fix the problem. You have no historicals, you have no parameters for the people that you put in, the positions here, there's a shortcoming in the method, so you've got to fix this. You guys are a bunch of intelligent people. I sit here and listen to this all the time, and I'm amazed at how smart you guys are, but this one thing, that's not only one, come on, let's go to United Health, you pay three point three million dollars for the building, and now you sell it for two. It sounds like the Bickley plan of accounting, you know, I buy high and sell low, so I can equate.
We can't discuss this, because...
I know, and I'm trying to form, I'm trying to formulate it online.
You get to say what you want to say.
How the world, you can, you can, I mean, how the world, the Bass Pro Shop even came into existence. Thank you for your time. Oh, one more thing, I want to stop, please. If somebody could talk to me about this, I'd be glad to listen, because that's the biggest footballer I have, even myself, a plumber can get this. Thank you, by the way, for your time.
Okay, is that it? That the meeting is adjourned?